None of us are interested in.
The game is over already? Nine twenty, so, but I hope we'll be out well before that. So, 7:04, I'm officially calling the meeting to order. The first thing I'd like to do is I would like to add to the agenda, going into a brief closed session at the end of the meeting. And I see other council members' approval for having a very brief closed session at the end.
It's already on the agenda.
It is, but this is too... So, I just need to get approval from council members.
I think we have to say what the subject matter is.
The actual form of motion that's actually called would be the ending of the closed session according to the provisions of section 2.2, 3.7, 1.1, 8.3, the discussion of disposition publicly held real property mainly to the town and block at the front of Warren, Leggett Avenue, discussion in open meetings with adverse effect of pardon position of the town.
Yeah? So, if I can, all those in favor of adding this to the agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright, that will be added to the agenda at the end, and we will still get it done long before tip-off. We have several sets of minutes in front of us. We have the March 11 minutes from the meeting on March 11, then the continuation of the March 11 meeting that occurred both on March 16 and March 31. Are there any... I guess we should have a motion first to approve, and then a second, and then we'll have discussion if there are any changes.
Second?
Second. Any changes, additions, or deletions?
I have a correction on page four. I was talking about the other work session.
We're telling you about a hall.
Oh, we're talking about a hall. Again, I'm talking about March 11, page four. Yeah, page four, number eight. We're not aware of that.
And I had a change on the bottom of page one, where my mayor's report discussed that the task forces... The task forces from last year. So, they weren't four, they were just task force.
Forces.
Forces.
No, the lead one.
Yeah. Alright. Any other changes? And roll call approval, Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Alright. Mr. Tynan? Do we need to do a roll call for the minutes approval?
We haven't done it until last month. That's been the normal...
We already did have.
I mean, that's all due to...
Well, let's do it the correct way, which is, I guess, that we are supposed to do a roll call. Mr. Tynan?
Yes.
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 And minutes approved.
This is for all three?
This is for all three. Alright. Mayor's report, I will be brief. There are a couple of things. First of all, regarding the post office. We are in the final stages of getting the information that postal service would like to receive. And we hope, our fingers are crossed, and I am trying to be optimistic, that everything will be resolved by the end of this month. So, all of us cross our fingers. I would say that, I would urge again, if someone is interested in in taking the building that is on the property and moving it, the town would be happy to entertain that suggestion, or that offer. And we're running out of time to be able to accept such an offer. The second thing that I wanted to bring up to you is that we are working at finding a solution to the streetlights dilemma. And in fact, at the May meeting, Mr. Van Acker, Tony Van Acker, is going to speak for a few minutes on the streetlights. And we hope to have, and by the time he speaks, several alternatives for streetlights, which I guess will be arrayed down to the far end of Gay Street, between Porter and Jet, I think, in order to see different options. Finally, we don't know the precise date when it's going to happen, but we have received notice that VDOT is coming back to the wonderful town of Washington this summer to repave Coward Street, Piedmont Avenue, Gay Street, Jet Street, and Porter Street. As of this point, they are not telling us exactly when this is going to happen, but it is going to happen. It is on their schedule. I have it in black and white. So, it will happen at some point. And as soon as we know, we will, of course, let you know. We have specifically asked them not to do it during the time when the garden club tour is happening at the end of this month. So, I doubt they will be ready to do it that soon, anyway. That's the end of my report. Kurt?
Thank you. You have the summary in front of you and the chat, the bills to be paid, and the additional bills as really only one outstanding, nothing unusual. It's a check for $88,745, which is cover regular loan payment on the waste water plant. You'll see a lot of things regarding computers who've upgraded everything upstairs. That's good. And that's as far as treasures go.
Alright.
If there's any questions? You're welcome.
Do we need to have approval of the Kurt's report? I'm sorry, I forgot.
Yes.
All those in favor? Do we have to roll call?
Yeah.
Alright.
Yes.
Yes. Sorry. Motion to approve? Motion to approve. Second by Captain. And I've said yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry for my stumbling. Planning Commission? Do you like to have a look? Like defer to the chairs?
Well, we didn't meet in...
Exactly.
Architectural Review Board? Alright. Their report, they are having a meeting on Wednesday here at Town Hall at seven o'clock. Mr. Bennett?
Nothing.
We have a joint public hearing with the Planning Commission for consideration adoption of an ordinance to amend Article 5.2. Would members of the Planning Commission like to come up and join us? Alright, since it's a joint public hearing, we should go ahead, and at this point, John, I'm looking for your guidance as sort of protocol. I'm sorry, I'm still very new at this.
Alright. Well, typically, the Planning Commission Chair would convene the Planning Commission and take the role of so inclined for the minutes. And then they would conduct their public hearing. Or if the Chair and the Mayor and Council consent, you could open your public hearing. Then you could open the Town Council's public hearing and have a joint public hearing rather than comments to the Planning Commission and then comments to the Town Council. That is the way it's typically done, so...
Can I raise a point of order? Which is, we're about to have a planning, a public hearing, but I didn't see the paperwork at the back on the thing that we're actually discussing, the amendment to the ordinance.
It's in the agenda.
It's exactly as in the...
In the agenda?
In the agenda.
So, just so everybody knows, you have to look at your agenda.
And just to clarify that, that for the piece of property really in consideration of the town lot, the rear setback presently is 30 feet. The front, the side yard setbacks are 15 feet. And it's 35 feet from the center line of the right of way for 211. That's a 40-foot wide right of way, so half of that 20 from that would be 15 feet from the edge of the 211 right of way. The post office has submitted conceptual site plans that presently could reduce the rear setback to between 10 and 15 feet. However, I worded the ordinance the way it is that can be reduced to any distance by feet or more in the event that post office should require amendment or change their site plan. And we're pressed for time, and it couldn't come back. While it's worded sort of broadly, that it's in all zoning districts, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, it really only applies to one piece of property. It's limited to properties that are used for post office, postal services, and package distribution, similar uses, that's it. So, while it sounds broad in a way, it's really just this project.
Could you just give us some indication of similar uses? What you had in mind with that? Adding those words?
Really, just to avoid the situation that it really is this type of use, but there's some nuance or small variance that someone could hang up on. That's the reason I included the similar uses language. But I can't think of...
So, just to be clear, this is ring fenced? This is absolutely deeply ring fenced just to the post office? It wouldn't cover other municipal buildings or just is, pertains to the post office?
Not unless somebody wants to open up another postal services, arguably, package distribution.
Very mail and package distribution.
Yeah, to be very... I think you could have a, there's FedEx or UPS stores.
Understand how protected we are.
Yeah. UPS stores would not distribute mail. So, it would not include UPS and FedEx stores. So, it really is very limited.
So, what you're saying is that, is there something to follow up on Callan's point? This structure must be both the post office, must be post office and postal service and mail and package distribution? If it's any one of those, they would not meet this?
No, either any one of those. However, I should clarify that, poor English. I meant to, I intended mail and package distribution to be a conjunctive, and the other ones are not. So, I guess it'd be clear to word it as for post office and postal services
And mail.
And mail and package distribution.
And do you need the unsimilar uses?
I, you know, I can't tell what nuances may come along. You know, I was just trying to...
Why put it in there? But we are so, at the moment, we're really just dealing with the post office. I think, I think members of the Planning Commission might feel more comfortable without that. But are we going to go ahead with a joint public hearing, Frank?
I would like to have a joint public hearing. So, the Town Council is opening its public hearing. Does this require a roll call?
No.
And the Planning Commission is opening its public hearing? Does this require a roll call?
No. We have what we like.
So, are there any questions or comments from the public to either the Town Council or to the Planning Commission?
I do, and it's really on behalf of the ARB. I know you're probably going to meet with us on Wednesday, but they have already submitted a conceptual site plan to the town. Since we're removing a building contributing to this district, do we also have to review that building so that it's compatible with the guidelines? Or I'm just curious.
Yes. Whatever they construct on the site, as long as it's a structure, it has to come before the ARB.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And in fact, there have to be some choices made as to brick color, the color of the soffits, and all sorts of other things.
Let me clarify one thing. I've seen a number of working drawings that I will call conceptual site plans, but there has not been a document handed to me, the zoning administrator, saying that this is a submission. So, there's been no formal submission, but based on working documents, the present setbacks wouldn't work.
Okay, thank you. And as I understand it, the building can only be, maybe moved is different, but it can, I thought it can only be moved. Once it's, once it's gone, then they have 30 days to begin construction, correct? Is that according to the guideline?
I believe the contemplation of the council is that unless this project is going forward, the building would not be moved. Now, if the project is going forward, what would be the time? I would say we need it. Whoever does the site work would be the most logical firm to deal with the building also, unless something else comes along. But the town would be free to solicit it and hire its own contractor in relation to that building.
Okay, thank you.
Any, yes?
Is this pertaining only to the post office right now? Or, okay, just the post office?
Yes.
That was that previous discussion. We're trying to put a wall around it, just so that it's just this particular spot.
I think there are a couple of concerns that I'm sort of bothered by, that's what I think. One is that, I mean, just looking at them, there are three pages of guidelines and requirements in the historic, the Architectural Review Board zoning orders, the law that the council must follow. So, there are three pages on relocation alone. There are additional three pages on demolition, which are two separate functions. And that's where I believe the 30-day notice says, from the day you take it down, you've got 30 days to start construction by law. And then there are four more pages on new construction, and what limits those new constructions. I presume that as Planning Commission members, we are safe in presuming that all of those rules will indeed be followed, in part because we're limited accounting to a lot of litigious people, and secondly, because it's the law, and the town needs to be the example in terms of following that law. So, given that presumption, the only other concern I have is that I'd really like to hear from any adjoining property owners about how they feel with, about the very small setbacks.
I was going to follow up on that. Aren't the property owners that are adjoining this property and in the neighborhood there, aren't we required, isn't the town required to send them a letter that this is going to be happening? So that they can respond?
Guess that would be the case.
Because it's like a variance, and then when you ask for a variance, that other property owners have to weigh in on?
I believe the owners of Avon Hall would weigh in, and they would appear aware of the situation. And as to the owner of the other house that when he faces, faced the property, it's on the right, I can't, I don't know where she's even located these days.
Well, she's related to Sharon, the property owner's here.
She's in Calhoun. No, we just, I wish that we've actually had contact. Yeah. I mean, a year ago.
So, well, there's another adjoining property owner on the other side of Leggett Avenue as well, is there, right?
Leggett is the... Property is up to Leggett.
On the other, on the primary side of Leggett Avenue. Somebody owns that lane.
It doesn't border on this parcel.
You look at the property as the counter.
It's my understanding that the property owner is aware of these proceedings and doesn't have any objection. But we could flush out, we could flush out the record if it were the pleasure of the Planning Commission and Council to conduct a public hearing, postpone any action on this until the next meeting, and we could flush out any notice questions before the next meeting.
Alright. Yes?
I don't remember her saying that she got any letter or anything. She didn't get a letter.
No, she didn't get a letter.
Yes. What is to stop the post office from moving, saying by five years, that X can't go through? Is there some sort of...
Yeah. The way that we have put this is that it requires it to be a post office and postal services and mail and package distribution.
I didn't hear the "and", I thought it was "or".
Well, that was an amendment.
So, that took on the developer standpoint. He won't let us say something changes. I'm playing the advocate.
Right, right, no, no, no.
No, we want to protect.
Okay, so, in five years, if it moves out, then...
Then they have to change the zoning again.
Then they have to change the zoning again.
And I do think it would help to take out unsimilar uses.
I don't, I think it's too rural.
I agree. I agree.
I think it opens up too much.
Yeah, my, my, my side on this was looking at it from a very particular point of view of dealing with this one site plan, thinking that this situation would never repeat itself. So, I was trying to give as much flexibility in that process, but if there's a concern going forward, yes, I would strike in similar uses.
Do we know how long the lease is from the post office leasing the developer's building? So, that's essentially how long does this have a use that we can count?
That, yeah, it hasn't been awarded yet, so that has not been fixed.
Traditionally? Traditionally, it's, I think, 10 years? 20?
The only one I've ever seen was 25 years. As a practical matter, I don't think that the mid-Atlantic, the purchaser's going to put up a building for anybody to prospect. They're only going to be there for 10 years.
Yeah.
Do you have other public comments?
Excuse me, I didn't mean to speak for y'all. I understand that when we first got started, Mayor Sullivan spoke with you, and that's the feedback that I got back while he was still in office.
My recommendation, I guess, first of all, we should close any more public comment. We'll close the public portion for the Town Council.
And we would, we would close the public portion for the Planning Commission?
Not that, I have a suggestion. Since there's this question about notice, why don't you just leave everything open? Continue everything to the next meeting.
That's what I was going to suggest. And then what we can do is we can redo the language and have it written. We have to, anyway, since, since the language has been written, has been changed. So, we will bring it up, continue it until the May meeting.
And the property owners will be...
And the property owners will be notified.
Is it appropriate to also ask for some kind of rendering or some kind of drawing that could give all of us a sense of what this looks like? Or is that, is that always a preempt to apply this section? Do you know what I mean?
That will come. I don't think they've gotten quite to that stage, unless something's developed.
No, I may have mentioned, I don't know if you were here at the beginning when I was talking about it. We are hoping to learn this month. And at that point, then we'll start being able to have some idea of a footprint, and then an idea of what it looks like.
I think it would be really handy to have that by the YETI's as we are continuing to meet, or proposing to continue to meet. We're kind of buying a pig in a book here. We don't know what it looks like. We don't know how big the building is, or how tall it is.
Well, it's not approved yet.
I realize that, but we don't know if we're approving something, even just setbacks. We're allowing something to go in there, and we don't know what.
I just want to say, we very much want us to come, and I don't think we roll over and get ugly building. But I, this town has a history of making it very difficult for anything to happen. And this is, I think, on setbacks. And you look at what's there already in the setbacks, again, grandfathered in. I for one don't think it's the role of this hearing to look at plans and think we're going to approve them or mid-pit on them. And I just want to be clear on my view on that.
I believe that's absolutely correct. The two separate questions, the ARB is not in any way diminished in its normal function of reviewing the elevations and materials for any, the construction of any new structure. This is, this is, what is before the council here is actually to allow the building to be pushed farther back based on the conceptual site plans that I've seen. It is actually a natural buffer, because the water there has been classified as wetlands, so that will not be disturbed. So, there'll be a natural buffer between anything that happens on the town lot and the adjoining lot.
Two, follow up on Alan's anecdotal metaphor. All we're doing is trying to get our ducks in a row. And presumably, council could reverse this decision if this decision falls through. So, we can eliminate this exception.
Yeah, this is okay, depending on...
On this. Whether it's open or closed, we're all in agreement.
But I think we've made a, we've made an improvement there, so.
The other, the other thing, the applicant has discussed buffers and minimizing any adverse visual impact or any other adverse impact. And he is completely open to that. And is, actually is looking for the town to do a fair amount of landscaping and would accept landscaping that would actually make the structure not visible in any particular way from 211, from Warren Avenue.
And one, one other point to add on to that is that... And one, one other point to add on to that is that, um, I think it's a hard name, but the typical ugly white neon sign that you see or the fluorescent sign that you see is not going to be at this post office. So we do not have to worry about that. We have the opportunity to have whatever kind of sign we want to have.
We have a nice sign.
Me? Yeah, but I think something out on the street. So, anyway.
You could talk about it a lot for the high school.
I was thinking getting signs like they did for the street signs to do something nice, you know, in the school. John, I, I really appreciate the, the landscaping buffer, the visual buffer and all that. And that's, that's wonderful. Hopefully, we don't have to rely on that. I, my, my, our biggest hope is that the A R B will have the strength and fortitude to make sure that, that whatever building is there is, you know, of course, in keeping with the rest of the town, but also, I mean, you know, we're for the post office. We're, we're happy. You know, Bill and I are not NIMBY people whatsoever. In fact, we're quite the opposite and, um, our, I think our, our stance is that whatever you put there, we've worked really hard collectively to be very proud of this town, to, to, you know, keep it at a certain stature. It's a, it's a, it's, it's got a really nice brand, you know, piggybacking off the inn and whatnot. But, but basically, most people, if tourism is important and tourism dollars are important, they're going to be coming in that first entrance more so than the other two. And that's going to be the first building on, that you see as you're rounding the, the corner, barring, of course, the fire department and things on the right, but it's really got, it's, it, it, it takes, it's in an especially prominent position. And so therefore, I think it has heightened responsibility to really set the tone. And, you know, I don't know how we can regulate style or taste or whatever, but then again, I mean, I'm really hoping that the A R B is able to do that, but frankly, that's our biggest concern is, you know, what is this going to look like? And because whatever it is, we're, we're all going to be looking at it for a very, very long time. So, and just wanted to. Happy that we can mask it, but God, hope, you know, that we.
Well, it'll be, it'll be made or break. So that will have a certain thing to it. And, and you're dealing with government buildings, so you're going to not be able to have a unique architectural style because the government likes to have one of several different kinds. But there is the opportunity to add certain flourishes, to add different colors and so on and so forth to it. So there is a benefit.
They also want our input from the town as to what color brick, I mean, really details of the whole thing. And I think I can speak for most of the people here that we feel exactly the way you feel. And, and also I think it's, I want to say that you all have been great about this. We haven't heard any, anything negative from you. And it's a big step for you too, as, as it is the town. So I, I think we can all say that we appreciate what this is going to do in your neighborhood.
And we're sensitive to that.
Yeah, we are very sensitive to it.
I wanted to say this, that since there's been no formal submission of either conceptual site plan or, or anything else at this point, there's really nothing to pass out and begin a discussion about. But I want to assure everybody that as soon as there's a formal submission, it's going to go, it's going to be a public document. It's going to go to all the interested parties and of course, we want to give up to something that everyone's comfortable with, to the greatest thing possible.
All right.
So to be continued.
To be continued. So are we closing the planning commission?
Yeah.
So, so we are continuing to meet.
Okay, so you will make the motion to continue the discussion to the next meeting.
Right.
Which will be a joint meeting with the town council, which will be on May thirteen.
And this is a roll call vote, assume?
Doesn't somebody have to second it?
Second.
Roll call vote, Julie?
Aye.
Drew?
Aye.
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 All right, and follow this portion. Actually, we don't need to do it. We're still going. Good. All right, thank you, members of the planning commission.
I just, I wanted to see who is my contender.
I don't know. We don't want to do a motion to everybody in the neighborhood. That's just part of the staff.
Who, who's our?
So, please the council, please, and they're part of the public hearing. Yeah, but they voted for our decision, then they, is that what, you were going to go ahead?
They were.
They were. John, sorry, one last one. Their roll call vote. Continuation of the public hearing.
Public, continuation of public hearing by voting on the motion.
All right, so we have not had a roll call vote, so we need to go and have a roll call.
Do you, I think, do they make your own motion?
Motion, yes.
I made a motion to continue the public hearing on this issue to the next town council meeting.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Second from Dale. It's time.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right. All right.
Okay.
Old business.
Yes.
OSHA items, the waste water treatment plant.
Yes, I've got two things here that I'd love to have. This stuff I'm a fool for. We have a copy of the dark flash study that we've discussed and discussed. Seriously, it's an issue. Yes, you do, sure.
Can you pass it?
Last, yeah. This is for company to begin, label everything. And it's a lot of work. But we'll make sure that all the wastewater and water treatment plants are saving, are performing.
I think it's going to be more.
Yeah, I know. We expected like twice. Part is literally the part that was saved and part of electricity.
Like the ones to another. So these are labels that they put on?
Labels on the characters.
The ending of, that's what it means.
Yes, and the guests, yes. And this is for both the wastewater and the water treatment plant. So we might be able to get this underway as soon as possible for $7,850, which is noted to include labor, travel and expenses. So this is the total cost.
And these are requirement for OSHA? For OSHA?
Yes.
And this will be all requirements?
Yes, and this is a critical and red non-spent. Most of the afternoon, you know, today.
So it's really not something that we have much choice about.
No.
No. And just to be clear, one injury that occurred and that's not all in it could be ten, twenty times what we're gonna spend.
Is it a general regulation to regulate this right?
Yes, yes. OSHA has regulations and then, and then F D A doesn't have.
Actually, I've heard of that.
Right, so we see approvals then. Helen has that question too. Do you have to put this out for bits or do you something else?
No.
No, the, the town size, its size is less than 3,500, it's not subject to normal procurement requirements.
For anything?
Not everybody can do this. This is really special, I swear. I wouldn't mess around.
For the multi-thousand, I think, we could put it actually there. Multi-thousand.
Of course, Virginia, that's down past Lynchburg.
Okay, so I'm a conversion.
All right, we have a motion for approval of lump sum fee of $7,350 to link this service. That's detailed in the letter of April two, two thousand nineteen. Do I have a second? Second from Joe. Oh, do we do a roll call for this? Yes, by Fred?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right.
Okay, I just said.
Ruth, go ahead.
One more and excuse, it turns out, but this was the problem. I had to cut in cases off a huge spreadsheet that, well, that belongs very good. In order for us to do anything at the top of the water tower, the reservoir, we have to have all sorts of safety harnesses and trolley to get up there and ours is old and can't even be used anymore. So in order for us even to get up there, so we have to inspect the top of the tower, see what we can have up there. And Laura can order this direct, so there's no markup, no taxes or anything.
It's terrible getting old, isn't it?
I know. So P S S send us, even the partner was here, so. That's $1,624.55.
Excuse me, Michael, do you have the ability to proof that without?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
But we're trying to bring most, everything we can here.
But, you know, the, one of the things that we've got going on is we've got an awful lot of expenses that are going to be coming up regarding the wastewater because we are dealing now with a ten-year-old plant. And so there are going to be some capital items that are going to have to come. And I just feel that all the town council members and the public at large should be aware of the process and the costs that we're going to have to deal with and have an explanation of what each one is.
Awesome. Wait, I just, you write it quick, let's.
We just put it, we just put it in code, so.
You're not supposed to be able to read this.
But because you all write it up, you did figure this out? E S S?
E S S.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the use of funds for this purpose? Thank you. Second by Catherine, thank you. Fred?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
So.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah.
Okay, streetlights. As Fred mentioned, Tony Van Aker will be here in May to talk about this. Tony, for those of you who don't know, we were working with R L E P and the Dark Skies Initiative to deal with the bulb issue so that we're falling under the dark skies. And Tony is the R L E P Dark Skies person. He is an engineer. And he has been working with us a lot. We have the one ugly one right here on the corner that's just there for safety. If you go down to the end of Main Street Porter, we have put up one bulb that they recommended. And another bulb is going to be going up on the next corner at Mount Salem that has a shield on it that will make it softer. So we're going to have those two to compare as well as one more that they just found that he feels might work that we'll be ordering. So we'll be looking at three to four different bulbs for, for us to make some decisions. That's it.
Did you want to cover up the fixtures?
No.
Okay.
Now, do you have a question?
Yeah. Close. And there will be a brief, and I stress, brief discussion about all this occurring at the main meeting. So about all the stuff that we're doing. All right. Be placed on this Friday, April twelve. Oh, it's a public hearing?
The public hearing will be at the next town council.
Town council meeting, all right. So the public hearing will be after the work session which we are holding this Friday, April twelve, from nine to twelve. And the public hearing would be in May, I think someone said it was the thirteenth. Do I?
No vote until the June.
Oh, on the month.
On the month.
Right.
All right, do I have a motion to authorize the public hearing? Awesome, thank you. Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Brad?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. All right, public forum. Open up the meeting for a public forum. Yes?
Two things, uh, you said they're bringing people into pay those streets, number of street.
Yes.
Do you think they can go back and fix the god awful job they did about eliminating those yellow lines down the middle of Mount Salem Avenue? I mean, it, it didn't last a week and, and it washed away. So it looks like, you know.
Well, from what I gathered, they put the lines in when they weren't supposed to until they tried to dig them up.
Well, but they could cover with asphalt, paint or something and they, they would disappear. And the only other thing I have to say is that just caused, you know, I went through this before, that the last time they wanted to put new streetlights in, it took them over two and a half years to decide what to use and how to do it and, and so I'm just trying to warn you that you're going to get a.
It's actually all of that, right?
It was much longer, wasn't it? Was this Charlie Elmer?
Yeah, but.
Oh, my God, that one.
It lasted forever. It was two and a half years.
Hey, this is just the bulbs. This is not the fixture. Just the color of the bulbs.
So you can use the same fixtures, is that?
Yes.
Hank, thank you. Brad, do you want to respond to the concern about the B D?
What's that?
The B D out about the.
Oh, the asphalt, yeah. To try and repair that because what they've done is they've scarified the surface. And it really isn't a good solution for it. You may think that you have to go deeper and you end up with a strip of asphalt which is just going to break up and frost and everything else.
Do they just clean it up?
Well, well.
Good idea.
You could probably try some little asphalt across it, but I don't know how long it'd last. Or, you know, it could be acid of, of the payers. What we can say in this year to make sure, we can talk with Superior to make sure that they don't put any lines down. There shouldn't be any street that there's lines on this year.
It is going to be Superior.
It is going to be the same ones as ours.
Okay, different, different contractors, okay. So we can, we can certainly reach out and make sure that, you know, there, again, there shouldn't be any street that has lines on them. But the really unfortunate thing to say is, once you mark a asphalt like that, the more you play with it, the more you're going to deteriorate the surface.
Can you, can you? Why don't you and I talk?
Okay.
Maybe we can have a conversation with the local authorities and think about our concerns.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, is that a, is that a B D out requirement that those lines not be there? And they're put, I mean, why do they have to take?
My assumption is that they just arbitrarily put the line in and then they realized the road was not wide enough to justify having the double line. That would be my guess.
Yeah, whoever the, the line contractor, because if you look at the line going down Main Street and then from the inn going the other way, there was a line that goes up to, where's the inn, comes up to this corner here. And so what happened was they went from where the paving started and just followed right out of town.
What a shame.
Yeah.
There was, if I recall, there was a line at the beginning of Mount Salem. There was, if I recall, there was a line at the beginning of Mount Salem, but it stopped.
Oh, that's right. But it stopped at the town.
Money out of the town line. You're right.
Yeah, that's, that was like, the, the rest of the road was, 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 was a public right of way. They brought that thing right up to the town line and then that's where it stopped. The road was, and then the rest of the street, I don't know.
The road looked really good for.
For a fleeting moment. Yeah, that's what I want.
Yeah, really good for me. Um, Nancy, I'm.
So, you said that since we have ongoing costs for the wastewater treatment plant and, and the water system, do we have a, a list, say a five-year plan, listing everything that needs to be done in, say, five years and the, and the potential costs? Do we have a list?
This person who's saying the sign they used to have brunette hair until she started this process. So.
There's one that's being developed. Yes.
We're working hard to try to get shut.
Yeah, we're working on that.
Good.
Dale and I were today on the phone. We'll introduce what are called short term. But we're also looking at stuff that's gonna be, yeah, three to five year, ten year upgrades and changes. Part of it is just what happens in terms of the plant wears out. It's certain things wear out. You're gonna have to plan it for. So, that is one of, one of our goals, Dale and I, is to try to work out and look down the road for changes and improvements.
Okay, I see. What's the approximate balance of the, the big though?
The what?
The big survey. The bomb.
How much do you have left in there? About? Are we just painting on the 90th album? About one million, eight hundred and fifty dollars. You're over halfway.
We're halfway there.
I apologize if I offended you with my last comment. Certainly, it was not meant. It was meant to be a compliment to all the hard work that you've done. So, I apologize.
Be careful not to.
I do, I.
I know.
Survey stuff is, survey stuff is exciting, flowers, and I appreciate it.
Quickly moving on. Yes, ma'am, show.
I just wanna say thank you for finally getting that little panel anyway up there on that.
Yes, thank you. You're the one who said this.
It was very.
It was Sharon who brought it up.
Very.
It is great.
It's very nice.
Very, it is nice.
Nice for the family.
Now, on that subject, I'd like to ask it, what's the status of the sign that says Washington, Virginia when you come in on Warren Avenue? It's not there and it hasn't been there for about four or five months.
Should be, maybe by the end of this week.
I just saw the pretty daffodils there. I might look up again.
Because I'm, I'm just happy to be moving with the vibe on. Do a mailman, it's not gonna happen.
First thing it's gonna do is prevent that and then cause the flu.
Yes.
We just have to follow up and then do it.
But the good news is that we have got a replacement sign for the one right outside the town hall.
Oh, that's wonderful. That's my next thing.
And people did a beautiful job on that sign.
Is that the one you did? He might have.
To the town hall.
Yeah. Oh, good.
All right. Any other questions? From the, all right, I am there. Well, I'm there by closing the public forum. And as I mentioned at the beginning of this meeting, we are going to go into closed session. And Mr. Bennett, would you go ahead and read?
Yes. Form of the motion would be to enter into closed session in accordance with Section 2.2, section 7, page 3. Discussion disposition publicly held real property agreement law unbarred for town at the intersection of 1 and 12th Lane. Discussion and open, open be with adverse or type of bargaining position of the town council.
I salute.
Yes. Roll call for her.
Thanks for coming.
Yes.
Bye.
Brad says yes. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
We are in the closed session.